I'll make the motion to approve those.
I'll second it then.
Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Abstain.
Don Renner?
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka?
Aye. Next will be the August 2nd special meeting, public hearing.
I'll move the approval of those minutes.
I'll second. I'll second it.
That's fine, thank you. Okay, Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Terry Pavicich?
Aye.
Don Renner?
Abstain.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
Nancy Kupka?
Abstain.
Okay, since we only have three votes, voting four, do we have to hold those over?
I think we do.
Hold them over?
Well, it's a majority of a quorum, isn't it? We have, we have quorum and that's majority.
It's a majority.
I should abstain from the 18th when I wasn't here. I voted on it. I was not.
Want to retract your vote?
I wasn't here, but I did read them.
Are you abstaining, are we?
I probably should, I guess, then, if I wasn't here on the 18th, sorry about that. I wasn't.
Okay.
So do we have only three votes for each one?
Yes, but it is the majority.
Majority of the board, so we're good.
Okay, so move to the first reception of visitors. This meeting includes two opportunities for comments from the audience, maybe they'd like to approach the board. Hearing none, we'll move on to the recommendations and report of the superintendent.
All right. Before we get into the listed items, I just wanted to take a second and point out two things that we did communicate to the board about last Friday, but I'd like to mention them in public. And one was several of the administrative, several of us on the administrative team attended the EXO breakfast last week on Friday, where Gabrielle Henderson received gold medals in both filmmaking and music. And we heard her composition, which was incredible. Yeah, talk about amazing. So that was a very cool event and got to see her and speak with her. And what a delightful student and going off to DePaul next year to make us look good. So, wanted to mention that. And then also US, no, Newsweek, right? Newsweek, top high schools came out. And we were listed on both of those. Where we shake out of the 26,407 public high schools in the United States, we're in the top 2% of those schools. So although I wasn't here to do that work, I just want to recognize the good work done by everybody to get us there. And I anticipate that will continue. So going from that, that leads right into State of the District Report, because that's how we did get there last year. This was presented to you on the preliminary notes that went out on Friday. Actually, I sent it out in advance about a week ago, since it's such a thick document. What I, in discussing this with the administrative team, what I thought we would do is I asked each folk, each one of the members of the team to come up with kind of the highlight out of that State of the District Report from last year. And thought we'd just go around the room and they'd pick out something to share with you that they thought was a major accomplishment or something that they felt the board and the public should be aware of. You can read the whole report on your own, if you'd like to at some point, but I thought that would be the most effective use of everybody's time in the room. And we'd go about it that way. And then we'll take questions on that half of the document. And then we'll talk about this coming year's goals from there. So.
And the report is on the website.
And it, or it will be.
After.
After tonight.
After tonight, okay.
After we make sure that there's no questions from the board. So we'll just go around the room, we can start with Pete.
Okay, I thought I would highlight 4.1A in the resources area, one of the strategic plan areas the district has been working on the last few years, has been implementing a plan for recruiting, retaining, mentoring, a diverse workforce. And I wanted to acknowledge the work being done in the buildings. This hiring season for the 16, 17 school year, we had 12 minority candidates screened. 10, excuse me, 10 were interviewed. And we hired diverse candidates for our Assistant Principal for Student Support Services, Dean of Students, Guidance Counselor, and Math Teacher. And then in addition to that, we've hired 12 diverse support staff members between the two campuses. So in one year, we've added 16 diverse employees to the district. And in addition to that, some of our non-diverse candidates bring to us skills that can help us working with diverse students. Nine staff report a level of fluency in Spanish that is either polite or fluent. Two in French, two in sign language, and one in Latin. So all of those skills help us in different ways. So a lot of work being done in the buildings and I wanted to recognize their efforts in helping us with this strategic goal.
Pete?
Okay, I'm going to highlight 2.3B specifically life safety. As you all know, state approved nearly $5 million worth of projects this summer. We started working on these projects, obviously the biggest one is water replacement north. But we've had a full pack installation at south, you know, track renovation north, concrete at south, exterior concrete stairs and landing at south, and many small projects that are on the 10-year life safety that is also included in that $5 million. So we restarted many of these and next summer there'll be other large projects. And I'm looking to complete the entire list in the next couple of summers. So we're well on the way and projects that have been successful, the boiler should be done end of September. So that's the only one that's not getting close to being done, but we're doing very well.
And a little coming soon preview plug for a future board member to keep you on the, or a future board meeting to keep you on the edge of your seats. In the September board meeting, we're going to report out on some of the larger projects that we took on over the summer. And, you know, the outcomes of those projects. And so some of those things that Jim is mentioning, we'll report out on in detail in about a month.
The sign looks fabulous.
Yes.
Better electronic, but better.
There is power. I saw the hour.
It illuminates.
It illuminates.
We need the Power Rangers.
We do appreciate it being there, though.
Yes.
It looks good. Gina?
I'd like to quickly talk about 1.4B, which is about STEM curriculum. And I selected this because as you know, we do all kinds of different things related to STEM in terms of clubs, in terms of summer camps, in terms of different individual opportunities for students and so on. But I wanted to talk a little bit about Project Lead the Way. As you recall, we just adopted the new course, Civil Engineering and Architecture. And just want to share a little bit about it. I mean, our rates of, the grades are incredible. Between 95 and 99%, of students are earning As, Bs, and Cs. And oftentimes, it's one student who earns a C that brings that number down. In terms of the tests, for some of them, every student is proficient or above average. As you can see, 87.3% of the students scored proficient or advanced on the test. And one of the other reasons I wanted to highlight that is we actually had a new teacher who is joining us this year, who will be teaching Project Lead the Way. So we now have three teachers teaching Project Lead the Way. And the teacher who's joining us is a female, so I think that'll be an excellent role model for our students. So we have 188 students total registered this year for our Project Lead the Way courses. And our new strand, Civil Engineering and Architecture, has 48 students.
Gina, how many, how many of those 188 are women or girls?
You know, I haven't looked specifically at the breakdown, but typically we only have a handful in each class. And we did, we were able to, however, this summer, we were able to run our STEM for Girls camp. So we're doing a lot to try and promote that.
Thank you.
Rod?
And I guess I'll, I won't do the PD because that was very interesting. But I will talk just briefly, we've talked this past spring a lot about the program, about teachers, what they're doing online. So we've covered that really, really in depth. I think that we're really excited about moving forward to year two of One to One. It feels to me, and I think a lot of folks, that we just don't feel like there's a time that we weren't One to One. Well, 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 in that, that way. This summer, we've made a lot of infrastructure adds and updates to really encounter, really get ready for what's coming in next year. And like Hank mentioned, we'll have some more to share as we look at Chromebooks that come back this summer to get a sense for what the, what shape that they're in and how the newer ones are going to fare compared to those. That'll be kind of a work in progress that we just have to consider for watching and the management.
Rod, I have a question. And it specifically is about 3.1C. I know we've talked in the past about some sort of assessment to make sure that all of our teachers who can be are on board with using the Chromebooks to their full advantage. And my question is, have we taken any, have we taken any steps towards that goal?
Yeah. That, I'll give you a preview, we'll talk about that in the goal setting for this year.
Okay.
But in, in one of the sections of the goals for this year is making sure that we've discussed as an administrative level, how to look for that in the classrooms when we go in to observe teachers working in the classroom. How to talk about that with teachers afterwards when we see appropriate use or spots where it would have been appropriate to use the device or it wasn't, or spots where somebody may be reached to use a device and maybe a whiteboard would have been a better choice at that time, right? But what we're most interested in isn't necessarily the, the number of instances in which the Chromebook is used, the quantity. We really want to focus in on the quality of the instructional tool, whether that's the textbook, or the Chromebook, or the chalkboard, or desks, whatever those resources are in the classroom. We want to make sure that our teachers are using whatever resource they choose to use at the highest level.
Well, I'll take five and six communications and community. And it was this time last year that we launched the redesigned websites that are mobile friendly and kind of underestimated the power of the behind the scenes and how much easier it was going to be for everybody internally to make updates to the website. So we're pretty pleased with the new provider. Also, the newsletter functionality, we're able to create newsletters based on all the content that's on our website very easily and, and share and spread the news to everyone who's in our networks. Our social media followers also continued to grow. So our Facebook followers grew by 20%, Twitter grew by 32%. We launched that Flickr website, so we have over 3,000 pictures there and 14,000 people have downloaded the pictures. Maybe not individual users, but 14,000 instances of downloads. We only have 10 followers, but maybe we'll grow that next year and hoping to get some more video out this year. People like pictures. We also had our communication survey last, at the end of last year, almost 700 people responded to that and told us that they do rely on the direct emails from us the most. But also, it's interesting that the majority of people, 75%, are on social media, do have accounts. And the most popular is Facebook, 79%, followed by Twitter. So we're incorporating that feedback and working with Hank to develop a comprehensive communications plan. Changes will include expanding our channels to include Instagram and LinkedIn. And so then in terms of the community, we continued the attainable futures program. We filled two buses last year, so 60 students participated in that. Many of you came to the luncheon at the end of that session. We're also looking forward to helping out with DGN's Second Annual DGN Gives Back Day. And so working with the chamber and finding those community partnerships that we can have our students go out and blitz during the morning. And so we have Goodwill, the Family Shelter Service, Saratoga Grove Assistant Living, those types of organizations that really love having the students out and helping volunteer. So that's a nice community service activity for us. That's highlights.
Mark?
Appreciate saving the best for last.
Absolutely, that's why I started with Pete and went on.
Actually, the guy most proud of at 4.4 is, and the results is the administration working not only to continue to, to grow and to do more positive things, but also as a team, not just the central admin, but both the buildings, all the administrators at the buildings and work together to put together a budget. I'm going to talk about it in a little more detail, but we had some surprises and things that we didn't expect to happen, but we still have met our goal. And so we, we think it's great that we're able to try and put some dollars back on the reserves and try and stabilize. And I'll go into that a little bit more in a few minutes, but at the same time, to continue to do all these great things. And that's what, you know, I would say we're most proud of here, at least from my side.
Any other follow-up questions on the State of the District Report?
I just had one comment, I spoke to a superintendent the other night who is taking advantage of the TAWs, the Tax Anticipation Warrants, continues to be grateful. Just thought I would say that.
We buy them from him, yeah, I think I know what you're talking about. That's a special near feeder deal.
Yes.
Gina, could you comment just briefly on 1.1B, the Avid GPA results and comparing the Avid students' GPAs to the regular class body, non-Avid students? Any concerns there?
Well, a couple of things I want to point out. First off, we're doing, we're calculating it differently, we're looking at the data differently than we did last year. So last year, we just looked at students that were enrolled in Avid, freshmen, students that are non-Avid freshmen, and we compared that way. This time, we started looking cohorts. So those that started in Avid as freshmen, then matriculated, and so on and so forth, so that group. Looking at it this way did bring the numbers down, there's no doubt about that.
I'm sorry, I'm not following the difference?
The difference would be, so those students that started in Avid as freshmen and continued in Avid, they're in that cohort like all three years, going into like now they're going to senior year.
And comparing them against?
Comparing them to other students that matriculated all those years.
Okay.
So we're looking at cohorts, much of the graduation rates are looked at, actually.
Okay.
So the numbers are a little bit different and they are lower looking at in that group. However, I think that's the right way to look at it. It doesn't obviously work for, you know, for freshmen as much as sophomores and so on. I'm not alarmed because the Avid students take more rigorous courses and they're expected to. These are not students who normally be in honors or accelerated classes. So they are really reaching, which is what we are encouraging all of our students to do. The difference really with Avid is that we're providing supports for that. And we do see grades increasing, we do see students doing better as they are in Avid longer. So I'm less concerned about that. It's interesting to me, in some cases, the growth for the Avid cohort is higher than the non-Avid, but then in other cases, it's not. So it's interesting when you look at it that way. So I'm not concerned about it, it's something to keep an eye on. It is something to make sure that we have the right supports put in place for those students. We also here are looking at our accelerated courses. And in a perfect honors, in a perfect way of looking at it, it will be honors, Pete, but we also factor in those accelerated courses. So in other words, if a student comes in as a Spanish II student as a freshman versus a Spanish I student. So it is, in some cases, slightly lower, but I'm not alarmed by it because of the rigor of the courses.
Are they possibly overreaching? I mean if.
We do have that happen with some individual students where we do pull back after we've initiated various interventions. We've made sure that the student's having threats for help, we make sure that the student's taking advantage of the tutorials. You know, they're, they're, obviously, we're not going to pull them out immediately. And that's across the board, that's not just Avid, that's Georgia. But certainly there are times when Avid students will perhaps not quite be ready for the challenge.
But this is a small data set, right?
It is.
How long have we, how long have we had the Avid program at District 99?
This will be our fourth year.
Fourth year.
So it'll be our first Avid class, our first Avid signature.
Okay. So we probably need more data before we can really understand the impact.
And actually, the data, every year we submit data in February to Avid Central, we're required to do that. And it covers all kinds of data sets, you know, grades, and attendance rates, and number of AP classes, number of tutors. I mean, it is an expansive data set that I need to submit, and it's by building. Avid is working on a report right now that will not impact us right away, but a few years down the road it will because it will track those students as they go on to college. So it will track them, not just how many students entered college, because it's not just about getting into college and attending freshman, it's about matriculating into sophomore and so on. So Avid is right now working on a longitudinal data report. Right now, we can pull data reports, but they're limited because we haven't graduated the class yet. But that'll be really exciting.
Yes, it will.
And you can pull reports not just for your school district. So we can look at how our Avid program is working in comparison to other Avid programs and learn from each other.
Thanks.
I just would like to echo Dr. Lee's comments about thank you to everybody, both in the ASC and in the buildings and the schools for all the work that you've done. And I think we've kind of skated by, but Pete, I remember about a year ago or two years ago, you gave us a report about trying to hire more diverse.
Yes.
Staff and how kind of dismal that outlook looks. So thank you so much. I mean, everybody's worked so hard and we really do appreciate it, don't think it falls on deaf ears.
Well, Janice and Ed in the building, administrative staff has really done a good job, you know, go the extra mile, encourage candidates to apply, bring them in and move candidates forward.
Tenanted budget?
No.
My God.
Oh, sorry.
We'll talk about this year first.
Yeah, we can talk about this, yes.
So building on last year going into this year, I gave the board a document that was a kind of a crosswalk between the strategic plan that was started in 2010. We're not dropping that, we're straying from it much. But we're kind of rewriting the goals. We started with the template of goals that were provided to me as goals. Over the last month, I've spent a lot of time meeting with district administration and the principals to break down, kind of morph my goals into the district goals. And that's what's presented to you tonight as the actual district goals. Many of them are very similar to what we talked about over the spring and then into June for superintendent's goals. Some of them have changed a little bit, some of it's vocabulary that we feel matters for communicating out what's going on. Some of them we coalesced and felt like they were duplicates. But I think the heart of what the board's vision that was communicated to me is reflected in these goals. I wanted the board to see these officially in an open meeting and be able to respond to them if there was any concerns or questions. Assuming that we go out, out tonight and everybody's kind of comfortable, just based on the feedback that we get here, these will then cascade throughout the rest of the organization. You know, each administrator has, and the work that we've, we've done, we've started putting out some actions and tasks and timelines and teams around each of these goal statements. So we know who's working on each one together as a team. We've already started outlining things that we're going to do going forward with these, which we'll share back out as the year goes on. But then each administrator can kind of take the ones that they're responsible back to their team and start outlining the actions that we will take to achieve these over the course of the year with the intent of next year's kind of State of the District Report, coming back and reporting out on, once again, a great year of progress. So that being said, it's a document that you've been working through for several months, you've had a week to look at it. I don't want to belabor the night by going through point by point. I thought I'd just turn it over at this, at this point in the meeting and see if there was any questions from board members.
I just had a question slash comment. On domain five, encourage continuous improvement of the educational program through educational leadership.
Yes.
One of the things we've talked about was the, and I know that this already is occurring, but it would be nice for us, I think, to memorialize it, is to have staff present at the annual meeting at, with other schools and to, to highlight that, because I know we are making an impact on education in the larger sense of the word. And I, from what I would like to see us kind of make it more explicit on our website and what we're doing and highlight the good work of our staff.
Agreed, and that's actually going to be part of my opening message to the staff. As well as, I shared with the board an example from June from a blog that I've worked with over the years that was looking for student voice. And I think along with getting the staff voice out there, one of the focuses this year, and Jill and I have already spent a lot of time talking about this, is also gathering the students' experience and the spots where students are leaders and getting that message out. Because as much as our students are, or as much as our staff are out there being leaders, we have a lot of students that are out there. You know, Gabrielle is an example that we talked about today. And their experience and our public knowing what their experience is, is important, just as important. So I think those two will go hand in hand over the course of the year. And the communications plan that Jill and I are working on will help us kind of streamline the ability of people getting those messages out.
I just had my usual comment about how ambitious all these goals are. And yet, there always seems to be progress in all of them. It's pretty amazing.
Well, and I will say that in year one of being a superintendent, I appreciate a lot of the vocabulary and vision that the board has is around evaluating and understanding what's going on in the district and giving, giving the entire team a chance to kind of come together, step back, figure out what we do well, the direction that we want to go in. And that will help us, I believe, accelerate the progress that we're, we're already seeing go on.
This, probably just vocabulary, master site plan, same thing as master facility plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe so. The master site plan was the vocabulary that showed up before. But yeah, I think the two are interchangeable terms.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns on that one?
Great.
It's me.
All right.
Now we'll go to the tentative budget.
I just want to drop the fund balances, operating fund. This is the tentative budget for 2016, 17. Throw the balance, fund balances up there. As I mentioned a minute ago, the process started really with last year's projecting, projection when we were showing a 2.9% fund balance projected. And for last year, we still, at that point, still had to be audited. And it did come in very close to that number. So we, we worked very hard with the administrators, there were a lot of tough decisions made. Areas where we probably would have preferred not to cut, but we did cut them, at least for this year. And a lot of hard work has been done to implement those. Some of the things, some minor things probably, which we put on the table, won't happen. One which is really, just letting you know for the first time tonight, not a big thing, I think it's a positive thing. Rental income, we hope to increase for this next year, but we have been working with the. But we have been working with the Park District, and the Park District is actually interested in expanding their programs, which means they would have more community use of our facilities, which may limit our ability to actually generate more revenue on rentals. But it's one of our goals, and I think when we presented it a year or so ago, it's one of those counterbalances against revenue income. You know, we don't charge them. But it helps serve our community. So we're pleased to see it happen. But things like that always get in the way of trying to, when you're doing things a year in advance, we're going to pick this, this and this. A couple other things, but we're really just delighted that we really could get it up to, if you look at the top grouping and numbers, 4.1% by the end of the year. We, you know, overall increase of 1.1 million. In the big picture, where I think if we weren't funding some of those debt service transfers out of the operating fund, we would have a $3.8 million surplus this year. I mean, so the value to our community is that we're spending $2.7 million of operating funds that most school districts are not doing. Some of that is leases, which a lot of schools are doing. But the biggest numbers there that comprise that 2.7 million are some of these large construction projects we did with the, in prior years. So I'm still very proud that we're doing that, and it's a benefit to our taxpayers, and it's keeping our tax rate very low. We have the second lowest tax rate in DuPage County of any school. So Hinsdale, which has one and a half times our assessed value, has a lower rate. I think their taxpayers are paying more on every tax bill, but they have a lower rate because they have so much larger AAB. And they have Oak Brook, which also helps reduce their rate. So we have a lot of things to be proud of in this district. The, some of the surprises that we had, I didn't really talk about too much. I sprinkled it in, some of the memo. The state passed an education budget, whatever that is, actually. A general state aid and mandated category calls will not be any lower than it was last year, which was a discounted value last year, but okay, we'll take it. It's not, you know, a sharp stick in the eye. But they haven't really decided what to do with the rest of the budget, which includes solving the pension issue. Which, they've protected us on the revenue side, but there's always room on the expenditure side to trap us, and that would be pushing down the pension. They have not resolved that, and it's really getting worse. And the last page or so of the memo indicates what the on behalf payment is by the state board. And it's about $15 million just for our district that they pay on behalf of our TRS employees into that fund. Now, it's probably five or six times higher than it should be because of back things that they haven't paid for the last 60 years. So it should be, you know, close to 6% or 7% on an annual basis for them, and it's about 30%, 31%. So they're just, you know, they've created their own problem. But that problem is still there. They're waiting till after the election, and I think they're going to try and do some big change or maybe nothing. We don't know what's going to happen with them. So, you know, you can tell out of my voice, I'm not too trusting of the state, but we're happy that we were able to add back to our reserves and be a little stronger. The Fed did make a cut in the WIA program, which is a voc program, primarily summer. Program supports our kids going out over the summer to their jobs. And it's about $102,000 hit that we took there. So that was not expected. We bought a new round of Chromebooks, which really wasn't in the projection, wasn't planned. Cost about $140,000 this year and will for the next couple of years to do that. Tuition for outplaced students went up. We did have kind of a small hit on some high needs kids. And so it went up a little bit higher than we had projected for it. During the course of the year, the food service sales remained slow. And new vendor costs with the new chart wells that we're going to start with this year, their costs are up 26%. So that, on the expense side, is about a $225,000 increase in that range, what we expect. But we also raised our meal prices. And we, if they sell the same amount, which that, you know, creating the $226,000 expense, we should be recovering more than half of it on the revenue side. So, and then the last thing, it really kind of came out in August here, was the replacement taxes, which we knew that they had made a mistake. And what they had done is they're explaining it, and it probably is right. They miscalculated how much of payments made by taxpayers were actually replacement taxes. So they misallocated the amount for years 2013 and 2014. And we did see some big increases in our replacement taxes those years. And just really very quietly, though, they put it on their website that they're going to correct it this year and over past probably, they say it's the first installment of the correction. They don't tell how many installments there's going to be. But it's about what we expected it to be. It's a $100,000 loss roughly for replacement taxes compared to what we had last year. So there's a couple bubbles that we had to hit along the way. The original projection showed us having a $500,000 surplus this year without it making any budget adjustments. So we should have been somewhere in the $1.6 million range. But we were able to make enough adjustments and survive it here. So we still have the 1.1 million, which was our primary goal to make sure we hit that. Some of those things were starting to hit as we targeted that. We started with a million, then I said, well, let's go for 1.1 because things are turning at us a little bit. So anyways, it was really a lot of time spent by all the administrators, the exec council, throughout the district, and a lot of discussion and dialogue about our priorities. And I think, you know, we had some good compromises, and not everybody was happy, so I think that's what makes it good compromise. So anyways, that is working out fairly well. And we have a lot of confidence in the tentative budget, being able to hold on to this. The counts are pretty solid right now. We did a lot of work to make sure that the revenues and expenditures that are reflected here are solid. So again, $1.1 million increase in the reserves, up to 4.1 of revenues here. If you want to hit the revenue block, we'll go through some of the key things there. Here's our revenues. Replacement taxes is the first item there, $99,000. That's the big hit there. That's the correction compared to last year. Interest income, we're going to hope to push up a little bit. The rates have come up a little bit. And we still hope to be able to issue warrants and buy, not issue warrants, but actually invest in warrants. And the rates on those are starting to go up a little bit, too, so we think we can push up our interest. You notice, remember, in the last several years, I had been pushing them up, but we never made those little increments, $14,000 or whatever it was, you know, it was always changing. And last year, I kept it short, and we actually did make it a little bit better. So I'm getting bullish the other way again here, see if it works. Tuition, if you recall, the June, end of the year report last year was unusually high last year. If you look at the tuition line item, we collected 148% of the budget amount. And that was because we changed our collection process. We were using eight to 18, an outside group to collect these for us, and they would remit it after the fiscal year started. And so we were able to get one and a half times our normal collections in one fiscal year, just because we took them directly rather than waiting for them to remit them to us. And so, and a comparison to last year's tuition, it's down in terms of actual. But the budgeted amount is up, if you compare it to last year's budget, and it's a pretty solid number. That's summer sports camps. That's the biggest part of that. And with all the work at North this year, we think that hampered some of their campus activity. So we think we'll be up a little bit at North compared to where we are this year. Food services is, again, that's up primarily because we've raised the price of the meal from $2.65 to $3. And so we're going to be charging more per meal. It may have an impact. We're kind of in a blind zone here. We're changing from a vendor that we don't think did a good job in terms of attracting kids into the program and getting type A lunches. So we have a new vendor, which is a new, hopefully, fresh approach, and we do think it is a fresh approach. They have a pretty good, they're well organized, and they have a pretty good plan going in. But we did raise the price for the meals. It's less or equal to what the kids have been paying at some of the feeders, though. So we don't think $3 is that bad. The meal's pretty good for $3. And hopefully, that won't hurt performance that way. The athletic admissions, if you drop down, is going to drop. Remember, Paul, when we set our fees, we increased our fees by $20, from $290 to $3.10. But we knocked out athletic admissions for kids, so none of our students will have to pay for that anymore. They also won't pay for plays or musicals or activity pass, which was $40. So the net for us is probably overall somewhere like a $20,000 to $30,000 loss. But it's depending, we really don't, we really never had good counts on how many students were coming into our games. I think we'll find out now. So, but we were expecting to see the athletic admissions drop pretty hard for not having the collections from the kids. The other local revenues is one that I want to point out. It's higher by, you know, it's $769,000 higher than last year. There were a good, a large number, actually, of activity accounts that we just went through this year. And we just took all activity that originally started, I'll give you a good example, would be regional competitions by athletics. And there's numerous sports groups that have, hold their own regional competitions, invitationals, as fundraisers for their sport. And then they use that for other entry fees above and beyond what they would normally go into in a normal season. A good one is cheerleading, and I'll speak to that one, because I know Shepherd did the same thing for my daughters, and I was a treasurer for that for some work. They would have a fundraiser, a regional, and it would generate $30,000, $40,000. They would pay the, all the officials out of there. They would pay all of it. They would have to give a certain amount to IHSA. And then they would be able to keep a portion of that, usually around 10% of that is what they actually kept, that they could use to go to different competitions around. And so we had a number of those, but there's some of these that were really, the amount that they were generating for the group was so small, we said, we really should just run this through the ad fund now. And it gives us better accounting for it. And it just, the nature of it has changed enough that we thought, let's just put it in the educational fund. It's one level more transparency because it gets different levels of purchase expenditure control and authorization. So we made some big moves. And you'll see on the expenditure side, we bumped up several accounts, too, that, so it really was kind of a wash, big picture. But it raised the revenues and also raised our expenditures, because we're now running these transactions through our educational fund.
Where were they before?
In the activity accounts. So athletics would have an athletic entry fee for different sports and different things that they would do. And South actually is much more aggressive and has done it much more. It's $100,000 just in a few sports that they had there. So they really do, they were running a lot of dollars through there, so let's just put it in the ad fund. And they will still have access to the revenue that they generate in the ad fund, and they will still.
That's what I was going to ask.
And we built the expenditures for them in the same athletic area for them to go to those same events as an expenditure. So we just grossed it up and put it in the ad fund. So it was kind of unusual. Yeah. It was part of the agreement as we went through it, that we wouldn't hurt the programs. Couple other things, I think I already talked about. General state aid is staying the same. We've got our allocations, and they actually overall look like they'll go up $29,000. And the federal aid was basically, a few of them went up a little bit, but the WIA grant of $102,000 took it down overall. So revenue side, overall, 1.8% increase. A lot of that is, you know, a good portion of that is bringing in those activity counts and grossing it up. But normally, it would have been probably closer to 1.4%. The, on the expenditure side, we can pop those up right on. Thanks. Overall salaries and benefits combined were a 0.8% increase when you take them together. The benefits, just for the medical plans themselves, the increase is overall for all medical plans combined was about 5%. So that's where really the largest increase came, in our increase for salary and benefits on a combined basis. We did have a large number of retirements this year, a large number of support staff retirements in particular. And with that benefit not going any further, where they have a retirement incentive, that was a $165,000 line item that just came off. There's no retirement incentive now for support staff. And so at least in the short term here, we'll be saving dollars. We don't know exactly how that'll affect future retirements, but it's a savings for us right there. And so the numbers we're seeing here are just the net of all those different changes throughout the year. Operations and maintenance and the purchase services is really where that negative comes from. With moving on to doing much of the projects, the larger projects with the life safety fund, that's where those purchase services will be paid. And it allows us to reduce the overall purchase service account in the building fund. So that's why we see a reduction there. Supplies, again, that's up a bit, and so is the activity, so is the other account. That's really because we've moved in different accounts. Some of the, some of the activity accounts that we moved in here were being used for professional development. So they would have dollars, and they would send teams off to do, in the musical area in some cases, to different theater, professional development opportunities, things like that. And so that's why it's in purchase services. A good amount of the dollars in other were for registration fees, and that's where that $133,000 income increase is coming from, really, in the other category, is different regional competitions that they were paying entry fees for the two schools. And then tuition, I mentioned before, is up a little bit. Scott's not here tonight, but he's done a really good job. He looks at every single outplacement. He works with the eighth grade students and the sender districts to discuss with the parents what options we have. And we do turn a good number of outplaced elementary students into district in-house programs. And so we have a pretty good record. But there was a couple there that we just couldn't turn in, and he didn't think it was appropriate anyway. So we're going to see a little bit increase there. And there's a little bit of cushion in there because of just not being sure. We always never know exactly what happens with tuition. There's always a lot of volatility. So we have a little bit of cushion in there for other surprises we might have. And then the last exhibit that I want to hit is just the non-operating funds and do a little bragging again. The, if you look at the bottom exhibit for the fiscal year, intended with the long-term debt, we're going from about $36.6 million in beginning debt. We're going to have about $28 million at the end, and that drop of about just under $9 million. We are really paring down our debt. And, you know, if we continue to this, we would be debt-free at the end of 2018-19. I know we have other things to consider. But we're in a very strong position in terms of the amount of debt we have outstanding for a district our size. And so that's the biggest piece there. And if you look up on the top, that's going through the debt service fund this year. Capital projects, you can see the, that's really the life safety work. We're expected to do about $2.7 million of life safety work this year. And out of that, we issued $3.1 million of the $5 million of authority that we have. And overall, I think those projects are coming in at budget, at or below budget. So it'll be interesting to see how much we have to issue to finish the remaining projects over the next couple of years. That's the big overview. Any questions you have? I'd be happy.
Just a quick question on the tuition. That includes the SASET tuition?
Mm-hmm. SASET and also VOCAD. There's some VOCAD in that same line.
Oh, that's right. Okay. So it's not all external?
No, it's not all special needs. It's also, it's a TCD.
Got it.
Tuition.
So Mark, with the maturities in '16 and '17, that means in '17, '18, the debt service, unless we were to implement some of our master facility plans, we're looking at a drop in our tax rate?
Well, no, I think it's '18, '19.
'18, '19?
Yeah. Before, we'd have a drop in the rate. So we have two more years, I think, after this. So we have '17, '18, '18, '19. And then I think it falls off pretty hard. Now, there's, again, I've always, and Mark and I, Mark McDonald in the past, and now it'll be Hank and I, I think, and the team will be talking about, what do we do if we do get hit with a pension piece? We tried really hard to just keep the budget reduction this year to $1 million, because really, we have exposure of at least $3 million on the TRS side if they were to push that down on us or some bigger number. I don't know what, you know, or how they feather it in. They're still talking about feathering that in over time. So we might want to use some of our working cash authority and issue bonds out in that first year just to try and match that impact, so we could try and get ourselves, so we don't have a big impact in any one year. so we don't have a big impact in any one year. So there's other things that could fill that, but you're right, it would fall off pretty hard, actually, about $8 million a year for, for some of that debt. So we would look for action in the action part of the meeting for approval of the tentative budget. It'll be on display. We would put it into the state forum. We'll be doing that probably by Wednesday. We, we're going to have, tomorrow, we have the schedule pick up at North, and so most of the staff will be there. But Wednesday, we'll probably drop it into the state forum and make sure it all works, and then we'll put it out at all those district buildings and then to the libraries within the district boundaries.
Any questions?
Stop.
Did you hear? Very good. Okay. Freedom of speech, please?
We received two, and both were responded to.
Moving on to the consent agenda, there's four items on the consent agenda for approval. Does any member of the board wish to hold one of these items? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. A second?
Julia seconds?
And I just, before we vote, I just had a question on the grant programs. Were those, are those approved by the board? Or is, I'm just confused, because isn't that the foundation's call? Am I, no.
No, these are federal grants.
These are different grants, okay. I'm sorry. Apologize.
Federal, yeah, and state grants, and-
Title II.
And there's, and then there's one more that's a partnership with Sprint that's in there as well.
Okay. Apologize for my ignorance.
Just different, yeah, there's, grant is thrown around in several different ways.
Terry Pavasich.
Hi. Sorry, I was drinking.
She was drinking.
Sorry. And Julia Buckman.
Hi.
Don Runner.
Hi.
Rick Pavanato.
Hi.
And Nancy Cupca.
Hi, thank you. The consent agenda carries recommendations for action, approval of the 2016 to '17 tentative budget, and this will be for display in the libraries, the buildings, et cetera.
So moved.
Terry moves?
I'll second.
Rick seconds? Terry Pavasich.
Hi.
Rick Pavanato.
Hi.
Julia Buckman.
Hi.
Don Runner.
Hi.
And Nancy Cupca.
Hi, thank you, Kerry. We'll look for those once you're first. Okay, moving on to the policy updates.
These are up for second reading. I haven't heard anything back from anybody. They're just, yeah.
These were the ones that were removing the specific names?
Right.
Or general, when possible.
Rick, you want to make the motion, Rick?
Oh, I'll make a motion then. Where is the motion on here? I'll make a motion for these policies to be approved.
I'll second that.
Rick Pavanato.
Hi.
Julia Buckman.
Hi.
Don Runner.
Hi.
Terry Pavasich.
Hi.
And Nancy Cupca.
Hi, thank you. The policies are approved.
Second reception of visitors. Anybody wish to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to communications and announcements.
We haven't met. We have a scheduled meeting September 23rd.
Julia, SACID, and Humanities?
Just a short report that we had our first meeting of the new umbrella board, I guess you'd call it, last weekend. It went very well, and elected some officers, and it was a really, I'm going to ask Dr. Volpe to forward, he had a great presentation on just what SACID is all about, then I'm going to ask him to make it available for all of the board here, because just in case we need a refresher on exactly what it's about. But I think that that new structure is going to work very well, and they did approve the budget for SACID as well, which I can also make available to you. But also, report on, I remember, you remember I talked about how they were hoping to be into the new building that they're leasing? It seems that there was quite a delay in village permits in the Village of Lyle, which is not unusual. Shocking, I know. They want to make sure it's right. So now that that's all been done, they're moving ahead, and they're going to try to be in the building by, I think, the first week in September. So they had to scramble and find some space because they're totally out of the one building. So got it all done, thanks to a great staff. And they're still waiting for permitting because Comcast has to run cable under Ogden Avenue. So that's a whole other kind of a permit. So they may not have internet access right away, but it's going to be great, really will, and I'll be hopefully reporting to you on that at the next meeting. And I don't have a report on the Illinois Humanities Council. We have not met, and I think my term actually is technically over. It's a three-year term, how fast time flies. And I'm not sure I'll be reappointed, I don't know how that works, so I'll let you know.
Okay. Terry, Don, the 99 Education Foundation?
We did not meet, we're going to meet the 24th, so I have nothing to say at work.
Upcoming board meetings, tomorrow, we will have a board self-evaluation, so that will be a closed session, starting at 6:00 PM here in the Administrative Service Center. This is for the purpose of self-evaluation practices and procedures of professional ethics, or professional ethics, a meeting with our representative of the State Way Association, which the public body is a member. We will also have our special workshop meeting on September 12th at 7:00 here in this building, and on September 19th at 7:30 in this building will be our regular business meeting. Anything anybody else would like to bring up before we adjourn?
You know, I just have a quick question. Is the village going to be done with the Dunham in time for opening of South High?
They, I've contacted me, I assume they contacted the school, but I chatted briefly before the start of this meeting, and I assume he is not involved with them either. So last, just in scuttlebutt for the end of next week, but I don't have a definite answer.
Because, you know, that's our village working, you know, we had all summer to do that work. And of course, they wait till two weeks or three weeks before school starts in order to begin a project of that size.
I was not part of any of those discussions in our planning and our comment.
They have a lot going on. May the force be with you, Ed. I think you've got an alternate plan. But you will, Ed.
Okay. Anything else?
I suggest that we adjourn.
Terry moves? Julia seconds?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Here we go.